So I'm calling the meeting, the Board of Education meeting to order. Are there any comments from the public on closed session items?
We don't have, yeah, we don't have anybody that's come in.
Nope, okay. I'm reconvening, I'm closing this meeting and reconvening to closed session. Do I have all the board members? Is everybody here?
There's Caitlin.
Not yet.
Okay. I saw Joanna.
Sheldon's here?
Not yet.
I just promoted Sheldon to a panelist.
Hi Joanna.
Alright, I'm here too.
Are we, Caitlin? She here?
Nope, she's here.
Nope, she's not here yet. Should I start?
No, I give it a second. Well, while we are waiting, following our special recognition and reports and presentations, we will, we'll be asking staff to open up the chat box for folks if you have a specific public comment that you want to make. So we'll, we will be doing that.
Not doing hand raising?
No, we'll do it as a, because we need to be able to group, group the, the, this isn't a study session on one item. We need to be able to group the, the topics by item.
Okay, so.
So I'll, I'll give people direction on how to do that when we get, when we get there.
Okay.
Just let people know they, they'll have an opportunity if they, if they so wish.
Okay.
So that's going to be before the budget?
No, that's, public comment is.
It's after, right?
Six, it'll be seven.
Yeah.
Everybody's here now.
Okay, cool. Okay, hello. I am calling to order the Peddleham City School Board Meeting. Our first order of business is adoption and approval of the agenda.
Move to adopt and approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, special recognition reports and presentations, introduction of new CSI Program Manager, Jamie Bushman.
Alright, so we want to, we want to welcome Jamie Bushman. Well, she's already, she's been a district employee for quite some time, but I just want to clarify the position that this is a year-to-year, a state grant-funded position that has a very narrow focus to support the continuous improvement of the following schools, Carpe Diem High School and San Antonio High School. So that is, that is really the focus and it's a year-to-year grant that we're receiving. Last year, we had some teachers on special assignment where they were doing the work. This year, we're moving towards a model to have a CSI Program Manager. So with that said, we're pleased to announce the selection of new CSI Program Manager at Peddleham City School District, Jamie Bushman, who assumed her duties July 1st, 2020. Jamie has over 13 years of experience in education and has been to the Peddleham City Schools for the last 12 years. Jamie spent the majority of her time teaching at Pen Grove Elementary. While there, she served in multiple district and site committees and volunteered for many leadership opportunities as she developed as an educator. Recently, she's been a teacher on special assignment, continuous school improvement in the Educational Services Department. Jamie applied for this position as an educator who can see the big picture problems and then can hone that information to steps towards solutions. Last year, while working on her comprehensive support and improvement grant, Jamie demonstrated her ability to use data to create systematic improvements in our alternative high schools. Her training in data collection, analysis, and interpretation helped to inform policies. Jamie used the opportunity to better understand the issues facing alternative high schools from the perspective of students as well as teachers, staff, and district administrators. Through her strengths in leadership, communication, and empathy, she was able to establish relationships at each school site to create relationships based on trust and collaboration. Jamie earned a Bachelor's of Arts in Psychology from CSU Sacramento and a Master's of Arts degree from Tuero University. She holds both a Multiple Subject Teacher credential and an administrative credential. Jamie is clearly dedicated to education and brings experience, energy, and commitment to the position of Program Manager. Her enthusiasm and passion creates a working environment that is both productive and fun. She enjoys her work and her colleagues, and it shows in both her results, demeanor, and lasting relationships with peers. Congratulations to Jamie on her new position. Here she is.
Thank you. Welcome, Jamie.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you so much. I am really excited for this opportunity. I'm really eager to continue the work that we started last year. So glad that I get to see more of it moving forward and I'm looking forward to sharing that with you guys.
Great.
Thank you. That was great work you did last year, so I'm really glad it didn't just be this one year with nothing to follow through.
Me too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Good, thank you. And now, Ms. Chris Thomas, you are on Budget Revision numero uno.
Okay, thank you so much. I am going to share my screen real quickly. Can you guys see it? Whoops. Can you see the budget revision?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a 45-day budget revision. This is the first we've brought to end Peddleham for a while. Education Code 4217, Section H states that no later than 45 days after the governor signs the Budget Act, we shall make available for public preview any revisions of revenues and expenditures besides may reflecting the funding made available. So the Budget Act, which was signed on June 29th, basically created several changes and you can see them here. Zero COLA, flat funding from 1920, which we'll talk about because that's a little bit of a misnomer. Legislation discouraging classified layoffs, prohibiting layoffs of certain certificated classified employees, specifically classified with food service, custodial, and transportation. ADA hold harmless, again, that's a little bit of a misnomer and we'll talk about that in a minute. Learning loss mitigation funds, that's some of the Cars Act money, categorical programs, so restoration of the ACES grant, for example, we'll talk about that. Some special education funding, so are you guys seeing me scroll down?
Chris, can I ask a real quick question? You said it was, it was, the thing was signed in, at the end of June, but the tax receipts weren't due until July 15th, so were there any changes once the tax receipts came in?
I haven't heard of anything dramatic.
Okay.
So this is all based on the, the budget that he signed into law.
Okay.
I haven't seen any, there's always trailer bills with some cleanup legislation, but it's typically not dramatic. There was a dramatic shift in the final budget from the May revise, which is what we built our budgets on generally, and that's really what we're disclosing. What is the impact of that shift from our budget based on the May revise to the final state budget? So I'm going to go to my spreadsheets in a moment, but the plan, basically, you can see, we recalculated all five of our LCFF calculations for the elementary district, the high school district, Pen Grove, Mary Collins, and PAX. Using 1920 P2ADAs and a zero COLA, i.e. flat funding, it also includes restoration of transportation in the base awards. That's a part of the LCFF calculations. If you recall, they had reduced those by 10%. It also includes restoration of the mandated cost block grants, so they were talking about reductions to that. We restored that, and you'll see that in a moment. It also, we've, we've included here the one-time COVID funding from various funding sources, which you'll see also in a moment. Restoration of ACES that we talked about, that was a 46, almost $47,000 reduction that was included in the adopted budget. Special education, we don't really know what this fiscal impact is yet, and so we can't really disclose that because we don't know. As we get more information, that'll be included in first interim. And then there were increased cash deferrals, as you're aware of these really aren't budget impact, they're much more cash flow impacts, and we'll probably talk about that more at first interim as well. Some revisions to the ed code, and then the learning continuity and attendance, and that's due September 30th. So this is kind of, and this is all in the board item, but this just kind of shows what our overall budget looks like. So now, I'm going to stop sharing and I'm going to go to my spreadsheets, which basically takes all of this. Okay, everybody can see the spreadsheets?
No?
Not yet.
No?
It says you started, but there's nothing there.
Says my screen is paused. Is that because I stopped sharing? How's that?
Nope.
Okay, let me try it again. I'm going to try sharing again. It says I'm sharing it, but how's that? Can you see it now?
Nope. It says you're sharing it, but.
But you can't see it.
Correct.
It says your screen sharing is paused.
There's no unpause button or like under.
Do I go again or coming back?
It says resume share, but when I click it, it's not sharing, right?
No, it is not.
Okay, how about if I zoom out and I'll zoom back in and then I'll share it?
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Technology, it happens.
I know. I'll be right back.
We'll be here.
Does anyone know while we're waiting for Chris, if, you know, with this revision coming now, does our first interim date change at all, or is it pushed out, it stays the same?
Yeah.
Is this an early, whoops, an early revision, or rather than the.
This is just our requirement that we have to do when, as the budget, we received the budget.
Yeah, so it's a, it's an education code requirement that if there's a significant change.
Okay.
In our budget that we adopted or that you took action to adopt and the state's final adopted budget, then we have to disclose the impact of that within 45 days.
That is.
So typically, the May revise is super close and there's very little impact, and so we typically don't have to do this. But this one is very dramatic and so then we wanted to do that. Okay, now can you guys see it?
Nope.
You're kidding.
We just get a message that says Chris Thomas has started screen sharing.
Do you want to send it to one of us and we can look, see if we can, we can open up?
Sure. Hold on a second. Wait a minute, someone's coming over here.
I wonder what it is.
David.
It says.
It's not sure.
Stop share. Screen share.
Oh, go, go to screen one. No, no, go to screen one. Yep, right there. Click it. Now.
Now?
Yay!
Now you can see it?
Yeah, we see.
Your email.
You see my email or do you see my spreadsheet?
Your email.
Your email.
Email. Click the wrong, wrong pane.
Now can you see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so here is my infamous spreadsheets. So I'm basically going to now walk you through what the numbers show based on the information I just provided you in the narrative. So this first section, this is the LCFF calculation, so you can see the adopted budget in column A, and this budget revision in column B, and then C reflects the variance. Now see this negative 40 in ADA? So we, we literally recalculated all of our five LCFF calculations based on prior year P2ADA. The challenge for us is that number one, we have charters like Pen Grove that are growing, but I, it, it became a cap, that prior year P2ADA became a cap. So that is a problem for us because it doesn't say unless you're growing, it basically says we're required to use prior year P2ADA. So in addition to that, we closed Gateway to College and we closed Sixth Grade Academy. And so we're showing potentially increased sixth graders in our remaining seven elementary schools, but the problem is, we can't recognize that ADA because we're using last year's ADA.
The ADAs are by school, not by the district?
They're by the district, but it's last year, and it's by, and you carve out the charters. The charters have their own.
Carve out the charters, nicely.
So the charters have their own unique LCFF calculations, so when we eliminated their LCFF calculations.
Oh, I see.
It froze us. So then I thought, well, okay, no problem. There's these things called charter shifts, and I won't get into the complexities, but when you're using prior year P2ADA, there's these things where you can shift ADA through the charter shifts, but all of that was frozen too. So either way, we end up losing ADA in this venture. So that's why the whole, whole harmless thing is a little bit of a misnomer.
But can we count the ADA in Gateway to College and Sixth Grade Academy?
No, because those charters have gone away, so we closed them officially. So we don't get to use prior year P2ADA and say, we're shifting that ADA over to the, to another chart. Those, they're, they are their own legal entities, like they are, they're authorized by us, they're under our umbrella, but everything we do, all of our funding is totally separate. So when we close them, we should have theoretically been able to absorb the ADA that then went to CASA because they're not going to Gateway. We would then get the additional ADA that way, right? But the problem is, CASA has grown, but I'm capped at their last year ADA.
Interesting.
So this was kind of, kind of a problem. So anyway, it's kind of a good news, bad news. So the, the bottom line is, you can see how, you can see how our net total in green here, our LCFF calculations from the adopted budget, recalculating based on the final state budget, went up 4.9 million, but the challenge is, see how it's 68.9 million? The total of column B right here, 60.9 million, almost 69 million. Well, 1920, we got 69.9 million. So we're down a million dollars from 1920 to 2021. And I had all of our LCFF calculations validated through SCO, so we actually know what our P2ADA is. Usually at this time, I'm, I'm projecting and estimating what I think P2ADA. We actually know what our funded ADA is. The only question that we'll have to resolve, the only change that you'll see as we get into December and first interim, is we don't know the number of free and reduced meals, that unduplicated count. That'll be really the only shift that we will see once we certify what our unduplicated count numbers are, because that was not frozen. That is based on whatever we have this year. Okay, so here's the main change that I wanted to show you. If you go down here, you'll see mandated cost reimbursements and store, those were restored about 30,000. So it was about a 10% reduction that we were estimating. Remember that 10% cut across the board? We had assumed a 10% cut, so now we've restored it. And then if I go down, there's very, no changes in expenditure, because all we're doing is disclosing for you what the impacts are of the state budget, right? So even though there's lots of changes that we're posting right now, this budget revision is simply to disclose to you what are the impacts of that state budget, so you can kind of see an apples-to-apples comparison. Okay, let's switch over. Oh, the only other change that you can see we made here is we reduced the contribution to food service. This was like 50,000 last year. We increased it to 275 because we've lost all of our food service sales. We may still have free and reduced meal reimbursements coming in, but we've lost all of our food service sales. We dramatically increased this up. Now, we're reducing it by 100,000 because one of the banks of COVID-19 dollars that we can use is to help offset the cost of food, because the cost of providing shelf-stable food, which we're obligated to do, is far greater than our normal menu items. So we're assuming that we can offset the cost by about $100,000 in this particular revision, okay? So before I go to the ending fund balance, I want to jump over to the restricted budget because this impacts it as well. So we're getting both federal and state COVID-19 funds, and so all of this 4.2 million, these are all the federal funds that we're getting. And I can tell you, there's like three different banks. There's the ESSER funds, and that has to be spent by September 2022. There's the GEAR funds, that has to be spent by September 2022. And then the, the CRF funds, this is the biggest amount. This has to be spent by December 30th, 2020.
Wow.
So the largest chunk here, and I will tell you, it is 4.3 million, has to be spent, roughly 4.3 million by 2022. So, I mean, by December 31st, 2020. So we're going to be bringing back more information on how we anticipate utilizing these funds, and they're intended in large part for technology as we're doing this affording with our students. And then this other federal is part of the, the state COVID-19 funds, and it's also a restoration of that ACES grant that we talked about, about 50,000 that's related to ACES. Okay? Most of this money is now being budgeted down here in materials and supplies and non-capital furniture and equipment, which primarily is probably going to look like upgraded teacher devices, upgraded student devices, software licensing that we need to do for a lot of the stuff. And then you can see the ACES increases right here. That has to do with restoration of the contract with the Boys and Girls Club. And then that's it. That's really all this budget revision is. If I go to the grand totals, we have now restored, I mean, our, we're still deficit spending, and this is an important piece for you to look at. If I go to just the unrestricted, the deficit spending is down from 5.5 to 440,000. So we have made a shift of about $5 billion, and that's the good news. We've basically been able to kick the can down the road for about a year. The big question will be, when we get to December and we look at our multi-year projections, because I do believe that 2122 is going to be a very challenging budget year, and it'll be interesting to see what the School Services of California Dartboard projects when it comes to COLA in the out years, and also any deficits from the state that we're going to be anticipating. So that, that's it in a nutshell. The total general fund is 9.4 million. You can see how it breaks down. We've restored our 2%. This was well below the 2% at adopted budget. We have the South County Consortium reserves. We have our required, state-required 3% reserves, and then this is the available for our savings account, really, when it comes to planning for 2021 and 2122 and beyond. So with that, any questions?
What about the, the state deferrals? How, doesn't that make us, going to make us cash poor?
Yeah, I mean, literally, it doesn't impact the budget. So this, these spreadsheets don't change because of the cash deferrals, because basically the state's saying, we're going to just delay your, your payment. It's, it's, it's likened to, if you're getting a salary, and I'm going to use, you know, 50,000 as a round number, if your annual salary is 50,000, and your employer comes in and says, yeah, you know, you're making 4,500 a month, and I'm going to, we're gonna, we're gonna defer your last two months, 4,500 or $9,000, three months from now, you're still make 50,000, but you're only going to get 40,000 in, in a 12-month period, and, and then you'll get the remaining 9,000, or 41,000, you'll get the remaining 9,000 a few months later. That's basically what they're doing to us. They're saying.
How would that affect payroll?
So we're going to be working on cash flow reserve, or cash flow projections to see how all of that, how all of that flushes out. It's really going to get to be tight in April, May, and June of next year. But that's why these, the savings account is really important, because the more, the more, the more we have in our ending fund balance, the greater liquidity we have. They're not tied dollar-for-dollar, because cash is different than reserves, but the greater reserves you have, generally speaking, the greater cash liquidity you have. So we're going to be taking a really hard look at that. They just released all of kind of the estimates of what the portionment, the portions will look like for April, May, and June, that they're going to be pushing off to probably July, August, September. So, and then we'll be looking at, depending on the impact, what, what we kind of need to do. There are mechanisms that we have at our disposal, whether it's inter-fund borrowings, and if you'll recall, I brought a resolution to the board in June allowing us to do inter-fund borrowing. So in other words, if, if our other funds, and maybe it's a special reserve or capital, special reserve or capital outlay, if we have money there that we can temporarily loan to the general fund for a short period of time, then we'll be looking at those types of things to manage our cash.
Chris, I got a conceptual question related to the deferrals. For the, for those deferrals that go past June of '21, conceptually, does this mean that the state is, is promising that those funds from the next fiscal year in putting further in jeopardy that fiscal year's budget?
The cash deferrals become permanent at the state level. So what, basically what it means is every, every apportionment for April, May, and June get delayed every year to July, August, September, until they recognize a new expense at the state level that then reduces the deferrals down. So basically, they get one-time savings by saying, we're not going to recognize the obligation to the school districts, even though we're allowing school districts to recognize that we owe them money. So from an accounting perspective, it's a little mind-boggling, because like, you know, if we have a payable, then we expect that person to recognize a receivable, you know what I mean? If we owe someone money, it's a payable to us, it's a receivable to the person we owe. The state is basically bending those rules and saying, even though we have a, an obligation which we should be recognizing as a payable, we're just not. We're gonna, we're gonna defer that expense recording of that expenditure to the following year. But basically, it becomes an ongoing deferral. This is not a one-time deferral, it's an ongoing deferral until the state takes action to reduce the amount of deferrals, which it did through the Great Recession.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's, it's a lag in payment, a permanent lag is what you're saying.
Yes. Other questions? So again, it's kind of a good news, bad news. I would have hoped that, you know, when you, when you hear in the news that it's a hold harmless, or they're funding us at 2019, 2020 levels, and you compare it with what we got in 2019, 2020, it's not, it's not a hold harmless for us. And then if you, you further compound that by the fact that we have schools and/or charters that are growing, and so we're not getting the benefit of that ADA growth, even though we added an FTE at Pen Grove, because we have more students, we're not getting the additional ADA to offset that cost.
Chris, can we, can we switch? Do we have to look at last year's ADA? Can't we look at this?
The state, the state budget, Ellen, basically took action to fund all districts at prior year P2ADA.
Okay, so we don't have a choice?
We don't have a choice.
Okay.
Including charters, and charters typically aren't allowed to use prior year P2ADA. They don't, they, typically, prior year P2ADA is seen as a protection. So for districts that are declining, it's seen as a protection, so that every year, as we're declining, it buys you kind of a year to continue to plan for those reduced expenditures, which are, which are not dollar-for-dollar. So it's typically seen as a protection, but because, but that, in that case, you have a choice. I'm using prior year P2ADA because we're declining, I'm using current year ADA because I'm growing. In this particular case, it's, there is no choice. Everybody's funded on prior year P2ADA.
So where did our ADAs for Gateway and Sixth Grade Academy go? Did the state absorb it or something?
Yeah, they basically aren't having to fund it. They're, they're reaping the benefit of that.
So, Chris, I, I remember probably a month ago or so that, that they were talking about, they were recognizing that this was a problem with, with districts that were growing. Is there any, have you heard anything that they, at the state level, are going to revise this in some way? At the state level are going to revise this in some way?
I haven't. And part of the challenges, Maddie, is the way that distance learning is working and the way they basically told us. That, look, you're not going to take attendance for apportionment purposes. You're going to take attendance for compulsory education purposes.
Got it.
It makes it really hard. So literally, they have changed the way we're going to report ADA this year. And that becomes a challenge for trying to use current year. And I know charters, they've been fighting hard. It's because a lot of charters are growing through distance learning. And so you can imagine, they're not going to, a charter might, might benefit from districts going to distance learning because maybe they're. They're a virtual charter. And yet they're not going to get any benefit from any additional students because they're all capped at prior year P2 ADA as well.
I was just wondering, because I I think it was Mark Levine had a. A bill to use enrollment instead of ADA. And I I can only assume that that's kind of on the back burner now.
You know, they they may be still working on it. I haven't heard anything yet. I haven't seen any indications.
Yeah.
At this point that they're going to change that.
Okay.
It doesn't mean it, I mean, look, it, we're in shifting sand.
Yeah, definitely.
During this period of time. And so.
Yeah.
Is it possible, I suppose, but I I haven't. I haven't seen or heard from any of the organizations that we depend on for that information.
Okay.
That they think that that's going to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll keep you posted as we get more information. And if if something dramatic like that changed, we certainly could bring in budget revision back. In October or November in anticipation of first syndrome. So, you know, we're not held to only being able to do. Budget revisions at first syndrome, so.
Great, great.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. So now I'm going to stop sharing.
And now we are moving to comments from the public on non-agendized items. And Gary, you're going to spell that out for people?
Yeah, we're actually going to open up the chat for folks that have any public comment that they want to make. We'll separate them. From agendized to non-agendized. The agendized items. We'll have an opportunity to speak when that item comes up. So if you wish to make a public comment, what you will be doing is in the chat box, please put your name. Tell us, if you're using a specific moniker on your Zoom, it's not your name, please let us know what that is. And please let us know what your topic is. We need to know your topic. So your name, if you have a moniker that you're using other than your your name as your Zoom account and then what your topic is. So.
And, and also it's. We're take public comment is for non-agendized items. And then for agendized items, the public can comment on those as we come to them.
No, we we don't stop and we 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 take it now. It we just categorize them. We put them in the proper category. So if someone wants to make a comment on something that's agendized, they need to let us know now. It's just that we are going to take. The public comments right now for the non-agendized items first.
Okay.
So we'll open, leave it open for a minute. We've got. It looks like we have two comments. We'll keep it open for a second. We have two comments. We have one comment that's going to come. These both are are non-agendized items. We're going to talk about supportive schools and then we have. One on career pathways. Once again, if there's anyone that wants to to speak, you'll, you need to do that now or else we will be closing in. About a minute, we're going to be closing the the. Option. Corey, we'll need to know what your topic is too. Corey Johnson. Okay, so Ashley, with you close the the chat box, we have, we have four comments, four public comments. And you can just take them in order, Ellen, if you see them, or would you like, would you like us to to name them?
No, I'll just take them in order and I'll read their topic too. So we are first going to hear from Phoebe Ellis about Safe Schools reopening task force and the budget.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello, everyone. Nice to see everyone. Thank you for being here. I know I'm sort of sounding like a broken record, but once again, I am hoping and recommending and requesting that Petaluma City Schools. Enlist a community task force which would include a variety of community members. Healthcare, construction, teachers, classified staff, parents, students. A rentals, a janitorial outside agency, whatever. The district or the board would recommend should be included. But now time is of the essence. We are in distance learning and I understand that at this point. That's out of Petaluma City Schools' control. Until we get off the state watch list. That's not even an option. But we should be ready and to hop into action. I know the board passed a. Resolution that you won't even consider it until, I don't know, early November. But as most parents and students have indicated, they are very interested in getting back to school. And I have not heard one ounce of discussion about what that would look like, what plans are in place, what's the budget look like? I just learned from Chris that there's 4.3 million dollars that need to be spent by December 31st of 2020. I would anticipate some of that money is going to be used to reopen schools, I would hope. It's a lot of money to spend in four months. So again, if you can look at the CDC requirements. They recommend a community task force. I'm reading it directly from it. The creation of a local cross-sectional task force comprised of local decision makers, education leaders. And representatives of school staff, families, local health officials. And other community members can support identifying mitigation strategies for their community. Given their local contest, context that can decrease community transmission levels now and throughout the fall. So I'm not sure why Petaluma City Schools is so hesitant to engage their community. There's wonderful resources in our community. This is a monumental task and I think the community, you should reach out for their. Expertise, financial support. Otherwise, it it's just, we can't ask that of our district to do it on their own. So I am begging and pleading that at some point and then. The president of the board indicated that she was going to put it for on the, for this meeting, but now she's. Put it, your guest aboard has decided to put it off until September 8th. That's three weeks from now. To even discuss a task force, a lot of work can get done in three weeks and a lot of work needs to get done. So I, I, at some point, parents and students deserve. Some information regarding how Petaluma City Schools plans to safely reopen their campuses. Thank you very much and stay well.
Thank you, Phoebe. Peter, talking about career pathways and a SCO update.
The career path was a mistake, but the SCO update is true. So first of all, I just would like to take this minute to acknowledge the board, superintendent. And all the PCS staff, teachers, classified, everybody. For their dedication to your students during these COVID times. You're all stepping up and offering support. To your, to your students regarding distance learning. Who knows how long it's going to have to be this way? Just a couple of things. I think you've gotten these emails, but I just want to. Go over them with you because I believe they're very timely in in what's going on. SCO received funding for something called the CARE Collective and CARE stands for culturally sustaining and responsive engagements. During this COVID-19 crisis. It's a series of four trainings for educators. It's free. It's on the SCO website. And what it's about, it's about. How educators can support and find available resources. To families that are black, Latinx, people of color and indigenous. Because these are the families that. More than other families have a harder time tapping into resources and even understanding what resources are there. Available for them and schools are safe place and families trust schools. So. This is an opportunity for educators throughout the county to learn more about what's, what's available to these families if they're needing help. The second thing is about several months ago, the SCO board was approached by some students. They wanted to. Talk to our board about inequities in school. Safety in school. So what's come from that is they're going to, there's a student forum, forum, I believe you got this email. A student forum on social justice, race and equity in schools. And it's a, it's a four-part series with students participating from schools throughout all of Sonoma County. Talking about their experiences at school. The first webinar will be Black Student Voices. The second one, Latinx Student Voices. Then students who are indigenous and finally Asian and Pacific Islander students. So there's a lot going on. We hear a lot of student voices talking about their experiences at school, both positive and negative and. Here's an opportunity for educators, superintendents, trustees to hear students from all over the county. Talking about their experiences. And the, and the last thing, I just, you know, best wishes to trustee Webber and. And Webster and Jen on their election campaign. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, that first webinar is on September 15th. So just as a heads up.
Good. It's about students talking, which is really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And Corey Johnson, preschool class at McDowell. Corey, are you there? I don't see her.
When I click allow to talk, it says allow to talk. It's not available because Corey Johnson is using an older version of Zoom.
Oh dear. So.
What? Sorry, I heard two voices.
Can you promote her to panelist?
Yes.
Oh, good. Be able to hear from her?
Yes.
There we go.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So hi, so I'm Corey Johnson. I thought I have. And so I'm, wanted to talk about the proposed preschool class. For moderate, for students with moderate to severe disabilities at McDowell. And I guess my concern is that, as is in the agenda, there is. They already have full inclusion, learning center and a special day class. And students with needs, so. It's a 7, 74.4% English language learners and 86.7% qualified for free and reduced lunch. And it seems like adding another classroom with students with even more needs. Moderate to severe, seems like a lot to put on one campus. Having special education is good for everyone on a campus. It would be nice if it was spread out, I think. So. All schools could benefit from having a variety, a diversity of students on their campus. And so I don't really see it, to me, it definitely seemed like an ideal site. It's, it might be a convenient site, but. I think it's kind of could overwhelm that school with students with a variety of needs. So, that's it.
Thank you. And that is.
There's one more, Ellen.
I don't see it.
It's Karen Johnson, AAUW Sports, I think.
Karen Johnson from AAUW.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. It's just not showing up in my thing, but.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. My name is Karen Johnson. I'm here as a past president and current board member of the American Association of University Women. Better known as AAUW. We have been an active part of this community since 1955. With the primary goals of promoting education, gender equity and lifelong learning. We presently fund multiple scholarships for students as well as the TechTrek Summer Camp for junior high girls. This is a week-long hands-on learning experience designed to inspire the girls to consider. Careers in science, technology, engineering and math. Every two years, we also join with the League of Women Voters to sponsor Candidates Nights. An integral part of the process through which you have all become members of our school board. Now our organization of nearly 150 members would like to find ways we can additionally support education during this difficult time. We are exploring various options for that support, including the raising of funds to specific needs. The donation of used but still functional computers, Kindle readers, board games that enhance learning like Scrabble, Scrabble. And Monopoly or in offering assistance as online tutors, since we have a number of active and retired educators in our membership. Our support may involve a single school with identified needs. Or it may be that we contribute to the efforts of other organizations already offering assistance like Rotary Lend a Hand Education Program or Mentor Me. We are looking for ideas and guidance from you as well as others in the system as we move forward in developing the information necessary. To offer as much effective and specific support as we can to the teachers and students in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's the last one. Thank you very much. Moving on. Um, we are now at the approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. We need to move this in and then we can talk.
To approve or adopt, whatever.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Whatever a verb.
Now, any, I have a couple of questions about some of the things. Does anybody else have questions? Okay. I have one question, especially since we just talked about the cafeteria fund. I saw that we have an agreement. With Laguna School District and I'm just wondering if this will help save jobs in the cafeteria by entering into this.
Um, so. You know, the state took action to basically let us know that we could not lay anybody off this year in the cafeteria or in food service.
Okay.
I don't know that it's going to save jobs, but it certainly is going to help our program, which is a good thing. We actually are providing food for Two Rock. We're providing food for Wilson or Wilmar School District. And several others, Headwaters and a few others. We're currently in the process of having conversations with Live Oak. So. However, we can provide food to the families of Petaluma's community, we're going to do that. So it certainly helps our program.
Okay, thanks. And then my other question had to do with the Atlas Mental Health. There was something in there that says warm lead intro and I don't understand what that is.
Yes, that was me. So I I saw the questions about Atlas Mental Health and a warm lead intro was just. They had initially reached out to Casa Grande. And kind of talked about the app and and we're working with Dan on it. And then Dan met with Justin over at Petaluma High School and said, hey, I think this would be great for both of the schools to use. And when Justin kind of looked into it and liked it, they then offered a discount and they call, because. Dan from Casa gave them a warm lead on the pedal. So we got a discount on on the overall app.
And how does, how is, how do students, it's students, I assume, that use the app?
Yes.
How do they use it?
So the way that they're going to do it is. From, I talked to Dan about this because they're, they're starting and then cost, Petaluma High is going to follow a very similar model. But they're going to do a parent square announcement to make sure that everybody knows about the app and knows what the app is. And then they're going to take time in, you know, everyone's, you know, say first period class or one, one class across the board. Where the teacher will go through it with the students briefly and just have them actually download it. And then we're, they're going to start using different aspects of it from the administrative angle. One of the, I think Dan really liked is that. You know, California Healthy Kids, we can run, we run every other year. We can run it every year, but it's kind of more long-term. What this app allows for is just quick snapshots and like pushouts to get a feeling for school culture. And so then he can bring that information back to the socio-emotional learning committee that we're starting district-wide. And kind of talk about, you know, what, what. that we're starting district-wide and kind of talk about, you know, what, what we're finding with the app and what they can put in place at the school.
So this isn't counseling? This is not mental health counseling? I was really, I wasn't really, I have a lot of questions about this one.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a counseling app. It's basically a place where students can, you know, can journal, like photojournal and yeah, but that's. And just, and kind of have, you know, meditation sessions, breathing, really, you know, sort of like headspace activities that are supportive of students. And it would basically, you know, through the school subscription at both Casa and Petaluma could push it out to students so that they all have access to it.
So I was just wondering, there was something where we promised to have 85% of our students enroll in it.
So like I said, we're going to, during the.
Vetted. How is this came about? I mean, this is like the first time we've heard about this, and it's pretty, to me, personal information that I, I don't know anything about this Atlas group. I went to their website, you know, I guess it's okay. I was just wondering how this came about, how much money is it, why, why are we doing this? And, you know, just that.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. I can answer all of those. So it's, it's 500 per school.
$500?
$500, yeah. It's, it's just a, you know, it's a, yeah, it's a chi fee. It's used by other districts locally. It was created by two Stanford grads to kind of create mental health space for kids. You know, you can see in their website that they have other districts, like, you know, it mentions the Tamalpais District, other districts in the Bay Area that use, this is kind of a wellness app with their students. So, you know, reached out to those, to those districts just to see, you know, are you, are you liking this app? Are you finding it useful? And it's, you know, paired with other things, it's just another kind of mental health support for our students as we're really trying to look proactively in using different things. So it's not, it's not going to be a catchall. It's not going to be one place, but it's going to be an app, you know, that students can go to in order to, I guess, have more positivity at this place, or to be able to step back and do kind of, you know, breathing and thinking and kind of mindful activities that will help direct, lead them in that direction. And so there's some class curriculum on there too, where, you know, a teacher could access something to walk a class through a mindfulness activity if needed to just take a breather.
So if they go onto the app and they need, you know, to do some meditation, is there, is there, is there a person there that, or is it just done? I mean, is it, I'm trying to figure out how, how it's really used.
Right.
How they plug into it, and then how do they get that support?
So it's not, I mean, it's support in the sense of like, you know, like, like headspace. I don't know if that's an app you've ever used. It's not support in the sense of they, they can tell the app their issues and the app is going to help them. It's, it's not to.
No, okay.
Counseling or to be a counseling app. It really is just more about mindfulness, taking time, another proactive approach, approach to student mental health issues and an app that they can use and have access to that's kind of done through a school-wide approach and a place where a school can get a snapshot of where are we school culture-wise, which is something that we can't necessarily do on an app like headspace, because it's more two-way communication rather than the one-way communication of here's some things that you can do, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes, thank you.
The kids, are the kids anonymous who you, who choose to use it?
So that's a good, so it's, it's not a reporting tool. For that, we're using Stop It, you know, which, yeah, Casa's also rolling out. They, they rolled out at their staff meeting today. So it's, I imagine that it will, you know, students will input their district email address in order to download the app on their phone. So in that sense, no. And it's not, it's not a reporting where you're going to say, you know, this happened to me. So we're not encouraging students to use it that way. It's more of just a mental health support that students can go to that's right there on their phone and where the school can be asking questions and checking in, you know, how are, how are things? I wouldn't, it's not going to be anonymous because they're going to have to download the app on their phone, and that's always a traceable thing.
Okay. Since you brought up Stop It, I have a question. I would, I really want to see Stop It used, but I want a guarantee that if a kid puts something on Stop It, that it's dealt with within 24 hours. I don't, I don't want some kid putting something in there and it kind of getting shoved to the side, or I don't know how we can do that, but I think it's really important that the kids know that if they put something in there, it's going to be acted on.
Right.
I don't, I don't even know what the turnaround time is when we receive the information. I don't know the particulars on that.
Or Stop It? It's like right away, right when the kid. Yeah. I did have another question.
We can certainly talk about that in an admin meeting.
Okay.
So, sorry, I think I forgot my question. So are there any types of flags on Atlas? Like if a kid puts something in, and do they know if they put something in that's? Yeah, that's a question that I don't know the answer to.
Let's go ahead and do this. We're going to pull this one.
Yeah.
And any questions that, any questions you guys have, then we'll go back, we'll have Mental Health go back and take a look at this and ask those questions.
I moved to pull this from the consent agenda.
Yeah. And what we can do is maybe have our SEL committee try it out, you know.
Yeah, my question was if.
Questions.
How much the, have teachers and the distance learning committee been involved? And then also just like what data does this company keep of our kids?
Right. So distance learning committee, not at all. This, this hasn't been a, we're actually creating a separate committee that's for mental health specifically, just was focused on instructional units and everything. Yeah. But yeah, send me your questions and we'll pull it from the agenda today and then I'll, I'll have, and then we'll dig down a little more with the company on any chance or any of those questions, and you can see if you're comfortable with it.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
So do we need to make a motion?
I did. I'm waiting for a second.
I did.
Okay. Ready, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's pulled. Good. Any other questions for the consent agenda?
Let me go back on that, though. The, the, the motion.
Was just a poll. Now we need to.
There's a nine, there's a 9.2.9, and there's a 9.2.10. It was.
Oh, yes, because it's at both schools.
Oh, at both.
I'm going to have to poll the other one. I didn't name the first one, so the other one's the other one.
2.1 and 9.2. 9.2.9 and 10.
9.2.9 and 9.2.10.
I moved to poll both of those two that have just been named by the two of you wonderful ladies and table until the next board meeting, because we will have more information from this mental health committee.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Good. Okay. Moving on.
Oh, wait a minute, I have another one. Since, since we had the comment from, during public comment about the, the grant, the Inclusive Early Education Grant, maybe we could just kind of talk about that grant and how it's, you know, taking over the 4Cs and that it's preschool and just kind of, just the, what it is, the proposal, and then the proposed benefit.
Are you talking about the inclusion, inclusive education?
2.11, the, of the Inclusive Early Education and Expansion Grant Award.
Yeah, I had a question, like how we're using it.
Yeah.
So I know Melinda's, I believe Melinda's on this meeting as well, so I'll start off just to kind of give some background. If you have specific programmatic questions, I think she can answer them. So there is a building that is not part in McDowell campus. It is on the corner of Maria and McDowell, but it's separate from McDowell Elementary in that it's really not part of the program. It has been, it was actually constructed and installed by SCO back in 1969, so it's been there about, about 51 years. So we, SCO has partnered with many organizations over the years to run and operate preschool programs on that campus. Most recently, they partnered with 4C who leased the building from SCO. SCO leased the land from us to house the building. And so SCO basically gave the building back to us. You accepted receipt of the building back in June, and so we took ownership of the building. And we knew that that was happening because SCO put us on notice probably back in January, February. In the meantime, this preschool grant had come out, and Melinda can talk about that a little bit more, but we applied for it because the biggest chunk of it was actually to do facilities improvements. And so this building is specifically designed for preschool. And so the idea around the grant is to really operate a, a, a regular preschool program that then provides opportunities for mainstreaming with special education students. So it's really not a, it's not a special education preschool program. It is a regular preschool program that we would partner with 4Cs. 4Cs was actually written into the grant proposal. They're very excited about being able to do that. We, the district, would renovate the facility, and as soon as we get this grant, which we're hoping you're going to accept tonight, we already will bring back a proposal from our architects to start working on those renovations. And then Melinda's team is going to be working on the preschool special education component, which is really about mainstreaming opportunities. So Melinda, I see you there. Can you unmute yourself? Are you? Yeah.
There I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody.
All right.
Yeah. Hi, we're, we're very excited about this program. The law has been really specific lately about creating more inclusion opportunities for students in preschool with moderate to severe disabilities. And South County Consortium has actually been running successful programs for the last couple of years through Head Start and the Wawa Abuse Site. But this is an opportunity to do an even more rich program with 4Cs. And as Chris was mentioning, we would start, it's a general education preschool with five students to start with, with the goal of getting to 10 by the end of the grant period. And we have an instructional support staff to work with the students, and the South County team will be providing the support for this classroom. And we have community partners through 4C's Early Learning Institute, Sonoma County Sopa, General Education Preschool Teams, et cetera, to make a really rich program for these students.
And I would, I would say that, I just want to add, this was a highly competitive grant.
Yes.
And Melinda, were we not the only one of several in Sonoma County that applied? That we were the only one who got awarded? So the program that, that Melinda, I think, really articulated in the grant, really, I'm hoping, and I think Melinda's hoping, that is going to be a model program. And using a facility on our property on the McDowell corner of McDowell, Maria, to really have a program that is, is wonderful for both general education kids and, and kids with special needs.
Right. We weren't the only ones in the county to get the grant, but I believe we're the only ones to get the grant in all areas. Chris, that was professional development facilities and adaptive equipment. So some of the things we'll be doing at this site, for example, is an adaptive sandbox, which is a stand-up sandbox, so a student in a wheelchair can pull up to the sandbox and interact with his peers or her peers in that sandbox, because climbing in can be challenging. And so a lot of what we're doing is really looking at how to support these students in an inclusive setting. I think when children are included at this early age, we see a lot less need for more intensive services as they go through their education. And also, I think that students surrounding them really gain valuable experience and working with children who have different abilities, so to speak. So we're really very excited about this.
And the, the most students you can serve is 10?
That would be the goal, because to have an inclusive setting, if there's about 20 to 22 students in the general education setting, you don't want to have more than half with students with moderate severe disabilities. Yeah. Yeah.
And 4C's again, has operated the program there for many years. It's been vacant for the past year and a half or so, but they're super excited about partnering directly with Petaluma City Schools to be able to do this. The building is actually not in bad shape. We had it structurally evaluated. It needs some freshening up, for sure. And most of the, I would say the majority of the money, at least 50% of it, will be spent on site-related work, redoing a drop-off pickup area on the parking lot side instead of having that very dangerous drop-off area that was on Maria Drive right there, across from what used to be Happy Steak or Esau's Restaurant.
Or Washington Square Vet.
Washington Square Vet, yes, my vet. I'll shout out to them. So, no, so it, it, so it's really going to be about creating AD accessibility, creating play structures and play areas that are more accessible for students of all abilities.
Yes.
And, and creating a good drop-off, safe, a safe drop-off zone for, for parents and students. And we've already, we've already been talking to North Bay Children's Center, who's also right there. So the building's on the corner, and then North Bay has their two portables for their preschool and infant programs. So we're super excited about it.
We really are.
Sounds great.
Yeah. And just one, one final thing to say is that a lot of parents struggle with finding preschools for their students in general education. And 4C's, of course, has really reasonable rates and a sliding scale, and they are subsidized. So we're really going to have more opportunity for preschool students in general at this site.
That's great. Thank you.
And they're a great program. They operate a great program.
I know a lot about 4Cs. Good job. Okay, are there any more comments or questions about the consent agenda? We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Action item, approval of the Petaluma City Elementary Joint Union High School District Budget Revision Number One for the 2021 fiscal year.
I move to adopt, approve, sorry, the Petaluma City District Budget Revision for the 2020 21 fiscal year.
Whoever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Now we are at future business.
We will be coming with presentations, starting our presentations to look at transitions into hybrid. We'll begin with elementary at the next session, board meeting, and we'll go from there.
Um, when we're talking about that, I know we have all this money we have to spend by December 31st. Are we?
I would say it's not all this money. I would say that, that most of that money's already been, been earmarked specifically for quite a few things, but technology is, is at the, at the forefront.
You mean community, connectivity for those students that don't?
Yeah. Because we had a whole, we have a whole refresh that we had to do because we didn't have, we have, we have issues related for K, all that K8 infrastructure, so.
So the 7, 8 refresh.
There's not really a, there's not really a, a big pot of dollars that are just sitting out there, but, so.
Can we use it also for making classrooms safer, you know, for potential return?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So it's, it's, I mean, we're, yeah, we're gonna, we're developing a, a plan around the funding, but it, it'll go a lot faster than, than what you think.
Yeah, it always does. Um, I would also, and I, I, we don't have to do this at the next meeting, but I would like a refresher on the EL roadmap. We had one, what, a year ago? And I think now, especially with distance learning and some of the issues that are cropping up with our EL students, I think now would be a good time to revisit that.
Can we do that one at the first meeting in October? Is that, where, September is going to be pretty, pretty big on the hybrid piece?
That's fine. I just want to get it in there.
Okay. So we'll, I'll, I'll put it down for us to have a conversation about, right now.
And then I really, Phoebe's idea about, let me write it down here, about a community task force, has that been considered or?
So Jay, Jason met with Phoebe this last week to discuss some of her ideas. She, she reached out at our parent webinar that we held and started to brainstorm and kind of just get some ideas from her on what she was thinking. So I know there was an initial meeting, and one of the concerns that she shared is, you know, we've been planning for what a hybrid might look like, but we haven't publicized that, right? So that's, her, her, one of her, her, her pieces of information was, it would be great if we shared that, not only included people, but also shared that. So we, we obviously wanted to get started with distance learning, didn't want to confuse people, wanted to get that going. While. While we're still working on what a hybrid would look like. Secondary's had a little more work than elementary, so I know there's some initial conversations. I don't know what exactly they settled on as far as next steps, but I'll, I'll reach out to Jason and see where we're at.
Because.
Well, we, we, the, the issue is the board's going to, will have to make a determination, but we should present, we should present what the work has been done first so that you have that information. Because without that information, the, you know, we've gathered a little bit of metrics. We didn't quite get the information at our community meetings. But we do have, we, and we do have a significant amount of work that's been done for the hybrid programs. So we need to be able to share that first. And then, you know, if, if the board decides that they want to get more input about what are the metrics that lead to making the decision about moving back or being forward or not, we should have that conversation probably after the, the presentation of the secondary blueprint.
Well, because also, you know, the woman from AAUW, I mean, they seem like they'd be a great community partner.
Right.
Because that was something that I wanted to bring up with.
To some extent, you would almost, not AAUW specifically, but a lot of this is almost more in PES realm. What?
Well, there's also Mentor Me through PPSC and PPSC is, is working with Mentor Me on a whole way of supporting families with distance learning and yet it's not going through us. And so.
Good thing. We're not a nonprofit. I mean.
But I would like to see some kind of communication with the nonprofits so that we're aware of what everybody's doing.
I absolutely agree, but I would, I, what I'm trying to say is that communicating with only one or two nonprofits instead of 50. So if all the nonprofits are working.
Right, and that's what I was, that's what I was wondering is if we had, if we could kind of develop some kind of protocols that, of communication, those lines of communication so that, like, you know, I've been a member of AUW branch for 30 years and so.
Me too.
Yeah, I know. And so they came to me and, and so I said, well, come to the board meeting so that it makes us aware of what's going on. Because they're kind of like spinning their wheels like this and really want to be involved as Rotary, all these different civic organizations and nonprofits. And so maybe just develop some way of, you know, I told them that PEF is like working in the same realm and, and, and she contacted PPSC. But then to also, but just also so that we have some way where just, you know, where, you know, there's protocols, communication tools for these organizations and we're in contact with them about what's going on.
Yeah, so they're not duplicating each other.
So we can, we can have the conversations with our, with our partners right now about distance learning.
Right.
Because that's a particular, because really what it comes down to is here's what the model looks like. And then that allows the, the, the partner and provider to say, well, how could we step in and provide some support?
Yeah.
With the model. What we can't do is that with the hybrid model. Because we haven't rolled that even out specifically. The work's been done, a lot of work's been done on that, but we haven't talked about that from, at a board level. Because we've been focusing in on, we made the pivot with the, with the health orders to distance learning, making sure that distance learning got up and running. I know people want, there's a lot of families that want us to have an answer for what the next step is. But the next step is, is some time off. But we, and we, we've, we've done a lot of background work. We just haven't shared a lot of that specifically because there wasn't, there wasn't going to be a receptive audience to listen to a, a program that we were not implementing on day one. That we needed to get distance learning in place. But yeah, we could start that, we could start that work with our, with our nonprofit and, and other organization groups about how do we, which is what we've been doing right now with childcare. We focused our energies on our childcare providers and working specifically with them, with elementary. How do we make that happen? But we can expand that out and start having that conversation with larger, larger groups, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And also I don't think that, at least in AUW's case, they were, that their idea was actually to support during distance learning. It was not that they're looking for, you know, when kids go back. If that's a clarification.
Well, because she mentioned some great stuff about offering support and tutoring and all kinds of stuff, and I'd love to use them.
They're really great.
Yeah.
They follow through.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I can give you an update at, at, at our September board meeting.
Other future, is anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I know that distance learning and this pandemic have brought up a lot of new issues, but I still feel like there are some things that have been unresolved, you know, that we haven't fully dealt with, like, I know it was brought up the ethnic studies graduation requirement. We saw that CSU just voted that in, I think for the 20, right? Sheldon, you can help me out. 2024, 2025 school year?
Yep.
For ethnic studies?
Yeah, it's a good bill. It's a good bill.
We asked for an audit to see how we're doing with that in the Fair Act. I asked for that.
Or even have it be a graduation requirement. I know it's a long-term goal, but I mean, look at CSU. They did like four or five years down the road. I would just like to at least start the conversation, maybe revisit it every couple of board meetings. Especially now it's needed. I mean, I have people on Facebook that don't even know that slave ships went through Jamaica, so.
There's, and there's precedence for that. I mean, it's happening at SFUSD.
Well, and we kind of did resolutions for both ethnic studies and the Fair Act. So is our curriculum meeting those resolutions?
Right.
So I asked about that last month, I think. But then things.
And then I think also, I'm sorry, Ellen.
Go ahead. I'm done.
And then, you know, again, a topic that's come up, I mean, forever, is sexual harassment. And especially now that we're online, like, do the students know what that looks like online, you know? I mean, just because they're not in person does not mean those issues have gone away on campuses. It sounds like when Liz, Liz was talking about when Atlas was going to go into classrooms, it sounds like that was being presented by counselors. I was just hoping, because I know we've brought this up before, that the students could hear about that and Title IX as well, more than once a school year. So, I mean, I don't really know where to start, but I would love again to have that conversation as well, especially given, you know, a lot that's gone on this summer with the Instagram pages and things and students feeling like they can't be heard. And we heard Peter Costas bring that up. And I love the fact that SCO's doing these student sessions. And I know we're all going to try to attend at least one or if not all of them. And maybe we could use Circle App for someone else to duplicate that for our students as well.
Good idea.
That's it.
Got it.
Okay, anything else for future business? All right.
So I just, I just wanted to give you a heads up. So Sheldon had asked at the last time about the learning continuity plan, so the LCAP replacement. So we sent out a post tonight on Parent Square. Well, I sent it out earlier, but depending on when you receive it. We've got five meetings that we set up. We have a very shortened timeline, right? It's got to get to the board by the 22nd. We have to hold a public hearing at the next board meeting on the 8th. So we're going to, a lot of it we've done, right? A lot of the summer planning meets some of the requirements, but there's more we need to develop and share and consult and review and get feedback on. So we, we added a page on our website under the LCAP. We've got all the dates, all the Zoom links. We've messaged it out today. So we're going to be, we're going to be bringing forward, you know, a plan at the end of September and we're having a public hearing. The plan won't be done by the public hearing. That's just an opportunity for public to, to, you know, see the, the draft at that point and provide some comments, but, so that's all happening.
So do we?
We have two, two meetings a week for the next few weeks. What's that?
Um, do we get the Parent Square announcements?
I don't know. I sent it to all.
We're still sort of.
I haven't seen anything.
All parents, all students.
We're still working on getting staff information in there fully correct, but you guys will definitely be included, I don't, if you're not already.
Thank you.
I was just going to maybe.
I love Parent Square. I love it.
My son loves it. Every parent I've talked to loves it.
Great.
Yeah, I don't have it, but I don't have a kid, so that makes sense.
Well, I have grandkids, so I, I care.
Yeah, there are things for dogs, weirdly.
Okay, any other future business? Okay, action on items in closed session. We are readmitting student number 2450 back into the district. And we approved the settlement for case number 2020060761. But do we need to vote on the readmittance?
Nope.
We didn't.
Well, then it's done. That's all that was needed to be reported out from closed session. So I am adjourning the meeting. So Sheldon, get home and turn on his flashlights.
Do you not have power?
Egenie said they're going to turn it off around the o'clock. So Joanna, you, you didn't get that message?
We finished in time.
Right. I was going to say Sheldon's definitely at home. All right, good. It was really weird that I'd not say that, know that, but yeah, okay.
Well, I think it's.
Good luck, everyone.
Good night.